So we all go ahead and take the meeting to orders. Um, I should have known that there was a good reason why this second item was on the agenda, approval of the meeting agenda. Should have known that Wes or whoever wouldn't have put it on there for no reason. But it turns out the president or whoever can set the agenda, can make up the agenda, but it's not the agenda until the board approves it being the agenda. That's according to Robert's rules. So I need a motion to approve this agenda that's in your packet. Someone, and I need a second.
Dan, you're gonna have to jump in really fast tonight to beat the delay.
No lag, buddy.
If I could just one quick comment tonight, Sam Homack is taking notes graciously for us. So if Sam, if you need anything repeated or somebody to identify who seconded it, just say the word.
Thank you.
I expect a very colorful minute.
There should be pictures.
With lots and lots of pictures. Well, anyway, thank you for doing that.
I hope everyone noticed that I like upped my picture in my report this time.
The bar has been set. I love Jason. It's on you now.
Brett and I are gonna keep doing.
Is there any public discussion? No. All right. Um, the agenda Ellsworth said was pretty slim and seems that it is kind of slim. The best part or the main thing about this meeting is that we have a new board member to replace Kelly. And I think it would be appropriate for Claire to, I got to meet her on Tuesday. She got kind of a not real good excuse for an orientation. And now that she can sit here on the board today. So I'll let her tell something about her background.
Um, I've been in libraries a long time. I've been in every level. I did a little stint at the university libraries at Cornell College. Then I went to, I was a teen services librarian in Chicago area. And then I was ran a little bitty library in Winfield, Iowa. And Jason, I interviewed with you. Um, and I then was a library secretary here at West High. And now I am the teacher librarian at Lucas Elementary School. So um, licensing, a little public library or um, school library connection if anyone is interested. Um, and I'm really excited to be here. It was kind of a surprise to me. So I applied a long time ago and then just got an email recently. So I'm excited, but a little surprised and happy to be here.
Good surprise.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, then the next item to be discussed.
Do you need our names? Oh, yeah, I would like, that would be nice.
Oh, true, right.
If you would say I'm.
Probably remember.
You.
I'll get to know you all.
Sure. But I, I won't really say anything like, I'm Carol and we met on Tuesday.
I'm Dan Stevenson, also a teacher. I teach down in West Liberty and you've been on the board as of this summer.
Do you want to pause and you want to, you want to introduce yourself?
In the cap preferably.
I'm Dan Kirin. Been a board member for about five months and I missed two months in a row with personal issues going on. Uh, and this is, this is my daughter's cat, River, and he thinks I am the, his best friend. So he shows up a lot.
So I'm Robin and I've been on the trustees for a few years.
That's some out of here or there.
A few. I'm Hannah Schultz. I've been on the board for two and a half years.
Oh, and Noah Kim and I joined along with the two Dan's about a month ago.
I'm Derek Junk. I've been on the board for two and a half years. I'm a secretary.
And we also have Tom, who doesn't always sit there, but he frequently does. Nice to reach out.
I did not, you know, I need to come and be direct.
Next thing in the packet is a, is some information about intellectual freedom issues. This is on the radar these days because a lot of libraries and school systems are facing issues with books that have been deemed to be controversial. Have we had issues here yet? No. And I'm assuming that Sam is gonna lead this discussion.
I'm just delighted to share that on Monday, the Iowa Library Association went and supported Urbandale and helped them put their PowerPoint presentation on the five trans books that were challenged. And they successfully were able to keep them retain all of those books. And I shimmied over to Johnston Community School District. Then we read an official statement through ILA. And they have decided to keep both of their books as well. We have eight more current challenges in the state going, but 20% went our way. So let's just keep rolling.
Can I ask a question about this? You don't have to ask questions. So in the past, when this just happened in the state, we've sent a letter of support from the board trustees to the libraries that are being, um, being harassed, as well as sometimes we bought copies, additional copies of books when the books were burned. Is this something that the board of trustees can write a letter of support to those libraries? So it's, so there's a different level of support being offered. And is this something I don't, I'm not a position to say, assume that we all want to do that. But is this something we should be discussing?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just being out there to the group. Is this something we want to do?
I'd say.
And maybe it was a matter of just standing behind them and saying like, you know, you're being attacked and we're, maybe attacked someone, but it isn't an attack. And we wanted to know the, we're watching you standing behind you.
What are the other libraries besides Johnston and Urbandale?
We've got Helen, we've got Chucks, we should actually have Caroline, but I would just, just.
And Helen's past.
Helen's past too. And then we have a couple that I think would refer to remain anonymous, unfortunately, just because of the chilling effect that some law legislature staff.
Yep. So we wouldn't want to cause damage. I'm just thinking in a community, they can be, their days can be tough, you know, and can we support some of it to the directors or?
I think it provides context information. Those that provide that support.
And do we do it as a body? Do we do it as individually? I think as a body, we just, we make a stand.
I agree.
Well, is there somebody who's volunteering to write that letter?
If you don't want to do that.
The president won't get to it for a little while.
I don't mind doing it. I don't know if it's, if it should come from one of the officers instead, but I'd be glad to put a draft together or something, whether it's appropriate for the group.
That'd be fun.
And so I, what I will do is pure control. Um, put a draft together and run it through the group through email. If we get a majority vote, we'll send it forward. But if there's any objections, I just want to respect that rather than let people know. And then maybe send it through Elsworth or Sam some way to, if it's appropriate. If that makes sense. So Sam, if you don't mind, I'd like to work with you on it. Just to figure out who's appropriate to send it to and then what's the appropriate wording. If Elsworth's okay with that too.
Does it also make sense for our board to have a letter to the editor and one of the local?
Or the Des Moines paper?
Yeah.
And we're in some communities that, you know, we are seeing this as a problem.
Right.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, you know, like I definitely think supporting the boards themselves, but I kind of worry putting it out there, you know, they don't want to be Iowa City.
Right.
That's fair.
This is true. However, there's some basic issues of just, um, library freedom. This is a core value. So I think we have to make sure we're not doing damage.
Right.
But maybe something, maybe there's something that just a committee of a few people can discuss, because I don't think it's going away.
Yeah.
I think this is going to be a growing movement on libraries.
Well, we've been celebrating banned books as far as, one thing you'd mentioned is that we had purchased some of these books that, uh, people were trying to remove from shelves of libraries. And if we could get a list of those and if we do not yet have them.
Would this be better for a committee or some of our committee of staff and trustees together rather than just having one letter? You're, you're more on the pulse of this.
I think a committee would be, would be an interesting approach. I also think if there's concern about being an Iowa City board, we could always reach out to the Iowa libraries or our regional libraries and see if they want their boards or directors. It would be jointly signed too.
Right.
If we thought that carried the same more, or more power.
So how do you recommend we take action?
Let me say, I might could talk about it, take it tomorrow. Maybe we could put ahead the other tomorrow and sort of think about, look at who's offended right now and what that one is.
Then we'll wait to hear from you then before we take any action.
Sure.
But if we know there's generally a sense that we want to be supportive in some way.
If a committee were to work on it a bit, I mean, it's probably a document that could be used again, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't have to be.
Well, maybe there's a record of the past times when we sent a letter, but it was when there were books being burned and, um, but it was in Orange City. And there may be a template for appropriate wording to start with. I don't know. It's been kept.
I make a suggestion to you. The community doesn't know that the Iowa State Legislature might take up a bill that removes the obscenity clause from, well, that removes the librarian and teacher obscenity clause. So schools and libraries right now don't need to uphold, you know, what's seen as obscenity. And obscenity can be, and there's a Supreme Court case that we've explained what obscenity is. A lot of people in the community don't know that that is a moving, a moving, with Iowa State Legislature goes into session in January. That's a huge, um, hard jobs. And I don't know how we would go forward if that law is passed and having 215,000 items in the collection. Then anybody could come in and say that any of them are seen.
Right. It might be a good thing to go to that over.
And I think that there needs to be, I think it needs to be known more in the community. I don't think people, when people realize that they're talking about jailing librarians and jailing teachers, um, they're shocked. So I just want to make a suggestion.
So maybe there's a bigger, you know, an advocacy role overall, supportive to peers, but then more advocacy on a legislative level.
And if it would be helpful, as an export, we need to kind of discuss what our plan is for if we do receive a challenge, what, how we, we don't normally get them, but.
I think that would be very, very good.
This would be along the path of least resistance, but I'm thinking along the lines of some type of, if, if we get quorum at the board level, what would be the issue with us taking that public? And by public, I mean social media advocating in that capacity. Are there risks to that?
I think awareness can.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense, but.
Yeah. And I appreciate the political risk, but I frankly don't care.
I think that even if some people who are going to try to push back, I don't know that that would be enough to deter.
Okay.
So should we, just so that we're clear, we'll wait to hear from you and Sam maybe and, okay, maybe Ann about what you think's appropriate. But I think there's a timing issue with the legislation that we can't let it just flow.
Is this bill prefiled?
Yeah, pretty much.
Go figure.
Is that separate from the letter of support that you're talking about? Like, are they the same?
I think.
Part of a committee or is that?
Two different topics.
Is that two different topics or is it that we just send a letter of support?
Well, to me, there's a political advocacy umbrella for both of, what, but I'm open to hearing how, how.
Thanks.
I think, I think there are two different issues, but there is still, over the changing culture about bringing of information.
I just attended a town hall about school libraries and the challenges that have been faced in school libraries all across the nation. And overwhelmingly, people felt isolated and attacked. And just a general letter of, we're with you. We agree, you know, like we believe in freedom. It's kind of an open, seems like appropriate and welcome to a lot of places, even if, um, I guess to the appropriate places, because it generally sounded like people who have undergone challenges felt very alone in their communities and very under fire in their communities and just lacked that kind of, a lot of times it happens in smaller communities that are political. And so, um, to me, it seems like it's a separate, like yes, we would send a letter and then follow up. To me, it sounded like that would be welcome, but.
The Iowa School Libraries Association would be very happy to lead it wherever you need to expand that one.
So.
Thank you.
So where do we stand now? We're waiting for word on writing a letter of support to a library that would appreciate it.
Well, I think the staff is gonna get back to us when they know the political sensitivities about some of this, perhaps make a suggestion and know whether the libraries want to be identified, because they may be feeling vulnerable. And then we'll take a step at that point. So that we'll, that's your understanding is that we'll be aware that there's, there may be timeliness issues of all just orders.
Basically tell us what, what you all think would benefit the situation most of all and.
I mean, the legislative issue, I've got to say, I was, I didn't know that. So that seems like a bigger issue.
I think the letter writing of support would be quicker.
Would be, yeah, right.
That'd be.
Maybe we need to get, we need to be educated a bit more on the legislature. When people didn't know it was coming, at the next meeting, like Ann said, it might be worth a good point on the agenda for January, to bring us up to pace on it.
Okay. Anything, any other issues for discussion regarding the challenges and freedom of information?
And the new dimension is about, um, the Friends Foundation's content that was in.
It occurs to me after it's, that United for Libraries really kind of focuses on like smaller entities where those books may be separated as opposed to more, it makes more sense to have your organization as a field. So forgive me, I thought the subject showed to the top about the board's trusting their staff with the selection criteria and things of that nature was good. But then it occurred to me that it isn't fully from this audience.
Now, it, I, it surprised me that the wisdom says that you shouldn't, you shouldn't serve on the foundation board and this board. And I mean, we, we formalized that process. So.
I apologize.
Oh, don't apologize.
Yeah, that, that looks for some libraries really good, but ours is really set.
Except that I, the point, the point that the material made, that how it could be a conflict of interest was kind of interesting. I mean, I, I've served on the Friends Foundation for a couple of years. I mean, Hannah's in her second year and Robin's done it. It never even occurred to me that these, that us, that we would have outside influence on the foundation, certainly.
And the doubling of power was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zero.
He's mad with power.
Right, but.
Thank you.
We're also two of like 80 members of the Friends Foundation Board. So I think that our votes are never going to do anything substantial to sway their decisions. I mean, do you ever, you can abstain, right? Like if you feel like.
We can.
It could abstain.
Could come up that it, you can always abstain.
I think it's just a great example of, as Sam's saying, I know you want to share this information, but it may have details that just kind of run counter. Because it was written before, a smaller library or a bigger library or whatever it might be, but sometimes.
I think it's relevant. I think it is relevant to explore those issues because you can get libraries early by their, their foundations group. And I think it's worth reading. The recommendations may be appropriate to some places and others, but the concepts are very important.
Oh, I thought it was interesting.
What could is any policy without scrutiny?
That's right. Um, all right. So moving on to the staff reports or the director's report.
Just have a couple of things to add that happened after the report. Matt was Scott Stover, just one of the city engineers about the pedball step. Um, after some.
Did you just clear out that pedball?
So we have a, how long ago? A couple of years now, they real, they did some more kind of pedball, kind of re-scapes in front of a library most of the way down. And part of that re-scaping added a step where there hadn't been one before, um, to the pedball side exit and trips to the library. It's not even sort of a three quarter step. Um, there's black, black stone on it. And, um, literally the day one when it opened, a person stepped, slipped and broke their ankle. And then we've had, to let go into too many details, we've had additional issues with the step. So what started out, it's part of the water maintenance for the, for the overall pedball. So like engineering wise, I think it made perfect sense. But just in that transition to practice, it's not working. I mean, we did have our most serious issue, um, just a couple of months ago, someone had a fall that was also going to a skilled care nursing facility and some ongoing care. So, um, we had asked for some support and making it safer after the first issue and tried a few different things. Um, the most, where we kind of left it was there was safety tape on the steps, a couple watch your step signs up, and then some large planters. So there's sort of one at the top and one at the bottom step to help people see where the difference. And I actually once all of the planted with our, didn't seem to really help. Um, but we had that, that series of things after that. So, um, Scott and I had talked before about really the next step will be in the spring, they'll do a bid process to get, we're hoping handrails, to get something permanent fixture wise there to bring attention to it until people have something to hold on to. Um, with the Iowa weather, they didn't feel like bidding for winter projects made sense. Um, so for right now, we looked at earlier this week, I think we're gonna re-allocate the planters so that they essentially go in a straight line across the top of the step. So there's no, there's no spot for anybody to step up or down. Um, one reason that we could do that is we locked the manual library door that faces the step. And that's labeled from the inside and outside where it's not available. So there's really no reason that someone would need to access that part of the sidewalk. We realized though, that people like to take their shortcuts on their quirky, personal directions around. So we sort of left it as, we'll have them, you'll have them moved and we'll keep track of, do we get comments or complaints? If we do get complaints about it being an inconvenience, there's, we think that we could isolate one ADA width, um, spot that could still function as a pass through. And then we're hoping that that gets us through spring. I think it's gonna look kind of funny. It's not gonna look intentional. Um, it's, it's going to look kind of like we're blocking a step, but I really don't mind that. I think for the short term, let's get it through. The, the planters are very heavy. So we're pretty sure that they won't be either bumped by the, like mini claws or moved by a littered person. Um, so that's, that's what we're gonna try. I'll take a photo of it once it's, they're moved and just share it with the board so that people can see. I know some people don't want to talk more often. Again, both got my sort of thought. It's not, it's not gonna be featured in the design magazine. But we both also agree that the safety level would be increased by just sort of taking that option away. Um, so I'll share it when we get a visual. And hopefully won't be as disconnected as I would imagine. But I also had reached out to Mandy Easter. We have just a couple agenda questions and Carol already addressed one about approving the agenda. The other question that we had had was, if a policy is reviewed but not changed, does that require a board vote? And her answer is sort of basically, she says, if, if I understand it, if the board decides not to change the policy, the record should still show it was reviewed on a particular date, but this is a board procedure that can be noted in the bylaws or otherwise decided amongst the trustees themselves. It would not be wrong for your board to vote to leave a policy as a, if you got meetings, the step could certainly skip. So it kind of sounds like either or. I feel like it's probably best to pick one and stick with it. Um, but it doesn't sound like it's wrong either way.
I, I'm pretty flexible on that one. But to me, I think we've just, I think traditionally we've just put, you know, the three, the, the unit policy then gets the review, you know, September 2021. And that's it. There's not really a vote because nothing happened. I'm good with doing it that way.
Go, Sam.
And I think also because in our packets, we have the documentation of the staff recommendations on the red line policy that helps us in those days too. So I just wanted to share that. Otherwise, everything stands in the report. Um, incidentally, it happened last Friday. It was, in my opinion, it was inconceivable. Um, thank you to the board members who came for all part of the day. Um, and, um, both Ann and Andrew were on the planet. To me, big thanks to them and the other other folks. But we're happy to answer questions about this in the report.
I don't want you to think we're laughing at you. We're laughing at Dan. You just can't see him.
Aw.
His cat, his cat has been moving about quite a bit. So we're not laughing. It was just kind of rude making you think you're talking and we're all kind of sleeping.
And just did nothing.
And Dan just.
It wasn't happening.
I have a cat like.
Um, can you explain to me that, or to us, I suppose, the tier system of accreditation?
Ooh.
I mean, like, how many tiers are there, I suppose?
There's just three still, right? Um, because it changed it a little bit recently. Um, what my, what it matters is I will put in my next report a little more detail, but basically it go, it, you have to approve things like, do you have a director? Are you open a certain number of hours a week? Um, do you have degree librarians? Um, is there a collection size question?
How much of your collection time is there?
Okay, um, general budget question.
Your children's library.
So it sort of walks through what might be, you know, unincorporated township of 200 library posts. It's open two hours a week by volunteer up to, you know, one of the larger libraries will stay. So we're the highest tier. Um, I have no question that we will stay there. Um, and it kind of feeds into some of the funding that you're, that you have available to you. Um, but also in some ways relates to like how much they need to do. And so it, now it has a number of figures that go out, but, um, I would say, once you get the size of having librarians on staff, deal of six or seven days a week, most of those libraries are kind of around two. Not to be confused with a grade system of how big you are, which is, A starts out with the smallest and we go into the alphabet of, um, and that's how they sort out sales day library.
All right. And a tier two library, it has a lot to do with professional development on that, on that level, to make sure that you're maintaining quality service. Because the more tier, I doubt that Iowa City will ever fall below quality service.
Well, not if we keep having the best bathroom in the whole town.
I wonder what someone's gonna.
The whole town.
Yeah.
They're very well maintained, but it's like, what is it? I don't, how can it compete with like the Von Mauer bathrooms?
Accessibility.
Accessibility.
Yeah, people feel welcome.
Equity.
Next to a playground.
Next to a playground.
Yes.
All of these awards were kind of funny this year because people weren't going out and about for a lot of the year. What do I remember about Iowa City? That was my favorite answer.
No, when we're tourist attraction, all know that's the issue. It can be with Trader Joe's, a tourist attraction.
Okay, moving on to the departmental reports. And this, I was telling you on Tuesday, Claire, this, this month, there's three, children's, collection services, and IT. So you will hear from the leadership people in most of the departments. And start with children's. And start with children's.
Um, yesterday, um, many have known Karen Gordon for, um, she's been here for almost fourteen years. She um, announced her retirement um, at the end of this year, so she'll be hiring um thirty hour library assistant sometime in the next year. Karen's done fourteen years of Hope Beach, it's one of her most popular programs. Pre-COVID times, we would have in the morning in the summer, it was always um amazing to come in and look at the story time room. It would look like a, a sea of strollers. Um, because there's no room for strollers to go in that, so Karen is very beloved and has a great following, so. A little bit of a, a bolted thought.
We'll celebrate her, move on to the next.
Oh, yes.
I'm having the excitement of a, a new life.
She is excited to travel.
For her.
Um, let's see, other, do you have any comments for Angie or questions? One of these pictures, these children in masks, like in ten years, will that seem weird or will we still be wearing masks?
I hope it seems weird.
Yeah, yeah.
We're always thankful that Ellen and Deke came and told us that that story time for us.
Um, okay, moving on then to collection services. And Anne will present this or answer questions.
The comment about, uh, our first week, we had two hundred and twenty eight patrons sign up. And we, about two hundred and fifty items checked out. Not that we're sponsoring.
It's pretty, I mean, I was, I don't know what I was looking for, but certainly it pops right up there, you know, or you can get it on Hoopla right, right now.
Right.
Um, I didn't, I haven't done it, but.
Yeah, we, um, so was that in the catalog?
Yeah.
So we just, so everybody knows, so Hoopla has a million items, but we wouldn't have enough room in our series I L S, so all of the, because we've got the record. Put the top twenty five thousand items and then we'll maintain that, um, based on the, what uses throughout the country. Digital collections are really hard to maintain catalogs, they're constant. And out, and no, but this light on the, giving an idea of what we're doing.
Right, right.
So we decided to go with the uh, the package where they give us twenty five thousand items and they maintain it regularly rather than expanding.
So, so they maintain the catalog part of it too?
They maintain the records.
The catalog records.
The catalog records. So they give us a monthly um, additions and deletions. They do not do that if you do the whole thing. So I just thought that would have been really a problem. Um, so we're going with the, with the route where we can keep the database update.
And the addition, when they give you additions and deletions, and do you have to actually do additions and deletions?
It's automated.
Okay. Um, other, other comments or questions for Anne? And I, I attended the in-service section on, on, it was really interesting. It was obviously was, was new. Poor Brian was writing down one question after another, so hopefully been able to get answers to all of them, but it, it was good. And that's it for collection services. The next one is information technology.
Uh, yeah.
Um, people have questions or?
Just excited about automated materials handling, where that's going to go. Yeah. Yeah, it is a lot.
Promise of taking plenty of photos.
Well, it could have a pretty profound effect on
Yeah.
on the whole library and very major. Okay, other questions? Righty. Hang on, um, so what he uses is said is that this, the Art to Go collection, which is, which was an interesting article. Um, the president's report really have too much that hasn't already been said. Um, I do, it, the, I, I enjoyed and got a lot out of In Service Day. I especially liked um, being at a table with, you know, by the people that I know at all. I think the only person at my table whose name I even knew was Bond, so was a good opportunity to get to meet people a little bit. Um, food was really good. And um, I, I learned things for sure. And it was good that four board members were able to attend. I don't think I've ever been to one where there's been more than two board members, so, so that was good. Um, I also sat in on the legislators' reception. Ellsworth covered it in his report some. I think it's a pretty pro forma event. Um, but and the libraries in the area, you know, report to the legislators who happen to be there. Um, you know, what all great things are doing. They did, um, Allison from the Corv, Corvell Library did give an update on what the Iowa Library Association is hoping to do with the twenty twenty two legislature. Um, they're hoping to increase funding for the state library. They'd like an additional one million dollars for direct state aid for libraries. Um, they're asking for more support for school librarian positions. And um, so, and they are going to push for the, um, the rights of local libraries to set their own collection policies. They, and that it's not a role for legislators. So this is obviously already on on their radar. Um, and the rest of it was pretty much a rundown of what each library is doing in the area. And librarians do get very excited about what's, what's going on in their libraries. It's, it's cool. I don't have anything else to add from that. It was, it's pretty benign. Um, let's see, what else? I was really, I really don't have anything else. I listened to, this is just a personal thing. I was Wes got me going on listening to ninety nine percent invisible, and recently I listened to an episode called alphabetical order. And I don't know if anyone's listened to that, but the code to that episode was a whole thing about Melville Dewey and how horrible he was, what a horrible person he was. It was really interesting. I would encourage people to listen to that if you think you might like to hate Melville. And that's it for my report. Um, announcements for members. Can be anything, including podcasts. Um, okay, committee, still there, Dan? Committee reports, um, the foundation didn't meet.
Didn't meet this month, okay. Um, um, Director Evaluation Committee has met.
Oh, good.
Sorry, I said the Foundation Board didn't meet. The Director Evaluation Committee did meet, but we don't have a report. Just that we met.
Are you meeting in person?
No, no.
I forgot one thing with committees. Um, if there's a committee that's put together to discuss the um, advocacy or support issues in the next month, I believe you need to, you'll need to assign people, because if it becomes too large, we'll be in violation of the open meetings laws. Also, we can't pass around the letter for discussion um, through email because we'll be in violation. So I wanted to clarify process. Um, how we're going to do this. We can, we can give some basic information, but it can't be discussion of the letter through email with the entire group or with more than three people. We're not causing violation of the, of the open meeting law issues. So I, I don't know if you want to think that through after, or if you're going to be available by email after the recommendations are made, but we're going to have limitations of, of signing a letter that we can't, I saw it discussed unless we put it off to the next meeting.
Um, were we planning to have a committee before the next meeting?
Well, um, I, I thought we were going to maintain some flexibility, but I may be the only one that had that understanding that we wanted to, to grant the letter of support as quickly as possible. I don't know where our time lines are on it. Something that perhaps Sam and Ellsworth know better, but we're going to take any action between this meeting and the next meeting. Um, we're limited by how much we can discuss it without being in public.
We so call a special meeting per one.
We can call a special meeting possibly, and that's an option. I just wanted to be open with everyone that if you think we're going to have the letter out before we meet again, there are restrictions to what we can and can't do. And, and how many people can be discussing it without us violating the open meeting law structure. So if, if you're going to be available by email after they, they make their recommendations, how we should go forward might be addressed then.
Okay.
But we just have to be aware of how much we kind of can't discuss outside of this setting.
Right. You can have, you can have a quorum, right? Up to four, we could have.
It's three or four. I, I need to go back and look at the state mandates. There's a limit though. I, I can't remember if it's quorum. Some reason the number three sticks in my mind, but I but it could be quorum. It's just, I know there's a limitation because even one day after the meet, after this meeting, a few of us stayed in there and started talking and we were reminded, four of us couldn't not be sitting there discussing an issue. Um, without the entire group being here, without being a meeting with an agenda, and one of us needed to leave the room right away. Because otherwise we're breaking that, that mandate. So it's just maybe something after Sam and Ellsworth get their recommendations, it's something you need to let us know how you want to move forward.
Okay. All right. The next um, item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, the minutes from the last library board meeting and approving the dispersments for November. Um, I don't know, does anyone have changes they need made to the in that case, is there a motion for a free consent agenda? Did you get that, Sam? Okay. And you got the second two. They're really quiet down here. Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Close. And then the agenda for January, it looks like it'll get a little meatier than, than this one. Um, time to do strategic planning review again. Hush the year then, I'll be happy. Wow. Um, are there, there aren't a lot of policy reviews on this calendar through next year. Are we all caught up?
Yeah, we looked at the, did the calendar sort of overlay? And I think that we, um, we have them throughout the
Only follow-up issue of that.
Models. So can I ask for one item be considered for the agenda? And I talked to us through January. Um, that we might need to look at the COVID nineteen rates and our policy.
Yes.
Um, because we're, I think the situation we're in now is not what's going to look like in January. Um, and to also seek some city advice. So it, it's an item that may be included or may not, depending what Ellsworth finds out. But since it's been such a big issue for us in the past, it's coming around now.
And um, if changes are needed or if they're drastic guideline changes, or we think we need to do something differently between meetings, we will either call a special meeting if it feels appropriate, and we'll agree up to that, or I will, I will push that information out via email if it's just sort of simple operational, but if there's input needed, that we need to do a group discussion about it. We couldn't go back to that model we had earlier where we hope we can get to the next meeting, but if we can't, we will we'll look at dates and call a special meeting. Um, there hasn't been city conversation yet about changing anything um, at a city level. Um, but it didn't happen quickly, so.
Well, right now, the mask thing isn't in place until it's not in place.
It's definitely, yep.
I think they formally extended it.
We did, yes.
I think I'm going to be.
I've also been wondering about the guidance that we have approved. We aren't following.
Right, our policy.
Let's move a little bit back, but maybe we just want to pull what we have, like maybe the first time. Let's sort of say that we're going to be following changing guidelines and using the inputs that we have. Uh, so that's a, we'll include that one.
If that policy is in place, I suppose we should, we should pull it if, I mean, that's two years old is so drastically different in the eyes of society than COVID that is two months old. If we tried to shut down the library again, there'd be, yeah, it wouldn't.
Oh, they'd break.
It wouldn't fly, but you know, there's, there's plenty of I mean, I think partly we understand a little bit better how to keep ourselves safe, but I think our acceptable options are not the same as they were back in twenty twenty.
I can remember the month that we last looked at our internal document.
Probably early summer.
It was a long time ago.
Like, I would say September.
March twenty twenty for two years.
This is a really time consuming process in the last couple of years. It's been a big issue for us.
Was July? And for a brief moment, we didn't have to wear masks.
It's beautiful.
Very brief. Okay.
I thought if we could pull up right now, we could look at it, but what's, what's
Right, and we went over a situation that we need to respond to in January. I just think that we, there could be information in January that we need to, at least acknowledge.
Oh, anything else? In that case, we will adjourn.